Thanks. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, at 7:30 PM. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantine imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public. It's now temper-- it's reopened to the public, but not for the purpose of this meeting. A supplemental notice was given in addition to the annual notice due to the transformation of this meeting into a remote virtual meeting. The supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This supplemental notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. A supplemental notice was also forwarded to the official newspapers, submitted to the township clerk, and published in the item on August 13th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gaston Halpert?
Here.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Here.
Mark Mattel?
Here.
Paracufis?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
David Mora?
Here.
Shunak Tana?
Here.
Chairwoman Betsal?
Here. Thank you. Apologies, my agenda is down. Headed up, but it closed itself. Okay. Approval of minutes from July 15th, 2020, which were initially circulated and then followed up. Eileen followed up with an email with corrections, adding Mark Mattel back in and making a change to the spelling of my name. I don't know if any other individuals submitted comments to Eileen directly.
There were just two comments, two corrections I noted today when I was finishing up. And that was in the adjournment. The meeting was adjourned. A motion was made by Dan Egglow, seconded by Betsal. And the time was 9:35. I think initially I had the information from the previous meeting, which I had changed. So I corrected that.
Great, thank you. Any additional clarifications or comments? Great. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of July 15th?
So moved.
Gaston seconded.
Okay, I was.
All in favor of approving the minutes of July 15th?
Aye.
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 Does anybody oppose? Great. Meeting minutes from July 15th, 2020 are approved. Our next order of business tonight is memorialization of application 20006, Jenny Yu. We had also multiple drafts circulated to us, or two drafts, I should clarify, circulated to us. The most recent that I have is dated August 12th, 2020. Does that sound correct?
That is correct.
Yes, we had an 11th, and then the red line was on the 12th made. Edits specifically reflecting the testimony that was provided by the planner.
Can I, before we have a motion, can I, can I just ask you a question? We took two votes on this. First, we voted on the application, which received all yeses. Then we voted on the purchase of three municipal parking permits, and two of the board members voted no. Does that then exclude them from being able to vote on the resolution?
Yes, because the resolution includes that condition, so, and we can't separate it out.
Okay, no problem.
Eileen, for the purpose of clarifying, I guess I could go back to the meeting minutes, but could you list those individuals who?
Yeah, I was one.
Yeah, the individuals that can vote are Daniel Bear, Gaston Halpert, Mark Mattel, Joseph Steinberg, Shunak Tana, Miriam Salerno, and Betsal. Jorge voted no on the, and so did Diane, but she's not here.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any additional comments or edits?
Just have a question. The order of that vote, Eileen, was first the permit, then the application, right?
No.
What's that?
We voted on the application first.
We did? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other items of discussion, I will move to approve the memorialization of this application, Jenny Yu, the application 20006.
Second.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Shunak Tana?
Yes.
Betsal?
Yes. Great. Application to 20006, conditional use approval has been granted. And we have one application on for tonight. I actually just received committee woman Egglow is going to be joining. Turning on her Zoom now. She does not have the Zoom login, so I just confirmed it. Eileen, you had emailed it. I would like her to have the benefit of being able to hear the application. So if we could hold, hopefully this would just be a moment, and I apologize for the delay. I will just try to find it and forward it again to expedite it. Okay, she is in the process of finding it. Okay, well, as we plan to begin, it looks like, I mean, thank you for welcoming in Mr. Zen. As I mean, mentioned, you are the attorney. I don't know if you're able to unmute and turn your video on so we can reach you.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Good evening.
You don't see, you don't have video of me?
I don't. That's your name.
I, I see you all.
Okay.
Know what I did or did not do, but I see you all.
Okay.
You might be able to.
You're joining via computer?
Yes.
And is there, down in the lower left corner of your screen, a video option?
Yes, yes.
And it shows that it's on? Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you. Believe me, we all have our technology moments. We just wanted to make sure we called in all the appropriate people who you would like to have in to call on, so that would be you and Melissa, as well as Jason Wirt.
Jason Wirt, correct.
Okay, so we have everybody in who you're expecting, and it looks like committee woman Egglow has jumped in as well, so we have a full house. Okay, we have two attendees who are in attendee mode, and I will assume they are potentially listeners, members from the public. And so in order for those of you who are in attendee mode and listening in, I welcome you to, if you would like, at the times when we say, do we have questions or comments from the public, feel free to use the raise hand mode at that point. And if you're looking in your participant panel, hopefully you see that as an option adjacent in my screen to mute me, so perhaps that's where it is over on your, the panel with your name, or a way to raise your hand.
And we should just, for the record, note that Diane Egglow this year, because she was.
Thank you. Awesome, committee woman. Okay, so that does miss. Thank you for your patience as we, as we proceed, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Zen, to introduce yourself and begin.
Thank you very much. This is an application on behalf of Canoe Brook Solar Partners for a floating solar array on the American Water property, something that this board approved nearly seven years ago on a smaller scale. This is a much larger scale, it's a solar array being proposed, but it is back on the reservoir property, if you will. It is probably 500 feet from the closest roadway and very well concealed. What I'd like to do is call Jason Wirt, who is our engineer, and have him go through the site plan.
Good evening.
So.
Let me, let me just swear him in.
Yes.
Mr. Wirt, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight's zooming to be the truth, the whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
If you just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Jason David Wirt.
Thank you.
Jason, for the education, could you provide the board your educational training and professional background?
Sure. I am a registered professional engineer in New Jersey and a number of other states. I've been practicing the profession of engineering specifically related to the civil engineering of renewable energy and related structures for approximately 25 years. I'm a graduate of Penn State University in agricultural and biological engineering, and have completed a number of these similar type projects, both in New Jersey and elsewhere in the United States.
And your license in the state of New Jersey is current and in good standing?
It is.
Madam Chair, I would offer Mr. Wirt as an expert.
Thank you. We'll hear you as such. And can you just clarify, I'm sorry if I missed it, and you just stated it. Did you do the, any of the work in preparation of this application?
Yes, I am the responsible engineer.
Okay, thank you. Apologies.
You got my next question already for me, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so you, Mr. Wirt, you prepared the, the site plan that was submitted in connection with tonight's application?
Correct.
Okay, and are you familiar with this property? Have you visited?
Yes, I've visited this property a number of times over the last three years that we've been working on this project.
Can you briefly describe the, the site?
Sure. The, the site is approximately 550 acres in total on the whole property, and its primary use is a water treatment facility consisting of two reservoirs and some related accessory structures owned and operated by the New Jersey American Water Company. The property is listed as a Sea Conservation Recreation Zone District, and the property has a large amount of environmental constraints, including wetlands, watercourses, et cetera.
Okay. You mentioned New Jersey American Water is the owner of the property. That's, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and they've entered into a power purchase agreement with the applicant Canoe Brook Solar Partners for the construction of this solar array. Is that right?
Yes, correct, for construction of this on reservoir number one.
Okay. And, and they'll be essentially purchasing and using all the power that's generated from this solar array. Is that correct?
That's correct. 100% of the power produced by our array will be utilized by New Jersey American Water.
Okay. Could you describe?
I apologize. Maybe this is where you're going next.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Are you hearing me better? No? Okay.
Little bit.
Little bit.
As long as.
Proceed.
Should I continue?
Yes.
Okay. Jason, could you describe the proposed array?
Yes, the, the proposed floating solar array is a system that's been deployed successfully around the world. There are, there are more than 200 of these systems operational throughout the world, and one very similar system that's recently deployed in Sayerville, New Jersey. It's a newer technology than the previous application that was submitted. And so this system utilizes a, an individual float for each panel, and that float supports each panel, and they're interlinked. The panels are relatively low to the water. From the front edge of the panel, we're approximately eight inches above the water surface, and maybe at the maximum heights of the panel, we're two, two foot, two and a half feet above the surface of the water. This interlinked float system provides stability and redundancy so that it can move with the water's surface, changes in water elevation, and also wind and elements that it's subjected to.
Okay. And can the solar array be seen from any roadway surrounding this property?
No, the, the solar array would be, would be extremely difficult to see from the roadway area. It is, there's a very limited window that you can see the reservoir from the roadway, and then we are behind some of the trees in that location. And it's also very low profile to the surface. Most folks think they're viewing the water surface as opposed to an actual floating array.
Okay, and Jason, I think the chair just typed up a message about referencing your plans. Would you like, Jason, do you have the ability to bring up your site plan?
I, I do have the, I do have the ability to bring up our site.
Madam Chair, is that, would you prefer that while he can?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That might help.
Is everyone able to see the plans?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so these, where my cursor is, these are the two floating solar arrays located on reservoir number one. For reference, I'll slide down. This is John F. Kennedy Parkway.
Mr. Wirt, excuse me, this, this is Ed Boozek, the attorney for the board. Before we go on, we need to mark the exhibits, despite the fact that the board has them. For the record, we, we mark all the exhibits. So if we can mark this exhibit for the purposes of record, Exhibit A hyphen one. And then if you can refer to, to it as that, that would be helpful. And if we do, others will mark them sequentially.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. So, so as you see on Exhibit A1 here, this is the John F. Kennedy Parkway. The driveway into the water treatment plant is approximately, right where my cursor is. So there's a very limited view from existing trees on the south side of the reservoir, and we also are sort of beyond this peninsula within the reservoir for where it's located.
Can, can you tell the board the size of the solar array in terms of the, the power that's anticipated to be generated?
The, the array is approximately eight and a half megawatts. And that's enough to provide 100% of the power for the New Jersey American, maybe slightly less, 98%, somewhere along those lines.
Okay. And can you tell the board the approximate area of the solar array?
Yes, it's approximately 18 acres.
Okay. Can you describe for the board any land disturbance associated with the project?
There's a very small amount of land disturbance, primarily due to equipment platforms for some of the electrical equipment and the installation of some accessory utility poles. Overall, we have about 2,700, 2,772 square feet of land disturbance and about 552 feet of impervious.
Okay. So let's go through now the traditional site plan criteria. Is there any proposed lighting for this project as opposed to what's already existing on the site?
There's a small service light that's, that's located on a equipment, equipment pad that's actually located in the wood, but aside from that, no, there's no other lighting.
Okay. Does the solar array have any impacts to drainage?
It does not.
Okay. Does this contemplate any fencing or new security, other than that, which already exists on the site?
No, what, what is provided on the site will remain, and no addition.
Is there any proposed landscaping with this?
There is some minor repair and buffer repair that the New Jersey DEP will ask us to do, which will consist of planting some new trees and bushes. That'll be along the water body, but no, no other landscaping.
And the, this is not a manned facility, is that correct?
No, the solar array is not manned in any way.
So there's, there's no need for parking? This doesn't generate any type of parking need, is that correct?
Correct. There would be no additional requirements beyond what the water treatment plant already has.
Right. And as we talked about, there's already a smaller existing solar array on the reservoir, is that correct?
That's correct. I will scroll forward on, on Exhibit A1 slightly here to provide a slightly better view. For purposes, this small square next to my cursor, to the left of my cursor, is the existing array. And so that gives you a sense of their, their small, was a, it was a trial, a pilot array that was very successful for them, and then these are the new arrays.
Are there permits required from the DEP for this project?
There are. There are two permits required from the DEP. The first of those is a flood hazard permit. The second of those is a freshwater wetland permit.
And have those been applied for?
Those have both been applied for.
Okay.
We are in our final negotiations with New Jersey DEP. The freshwater wetland permit is ready for issuance. We threw out a few little bits of discussion on the, on the flood hazard permit. They recently, because of COVID, have run a little bit long on their schedule, so we, we actually refreshed the schedule with them here recently.
Okay. There was a comment by, I believe, the planner that asked about the height of the poles. The poles that are shown on the plans are 40 feet in height, is that correct?
Correct. And for, for purposes of illustration, this, these dark lines are the pole line. That's how the electricity moves from, from the array down into the water treatment plant. Those are electrical poles. They're not lighted. They may be electric conductors. Because of the sensitive environmental nature of the, of the location here, the DEP has asked us to minimize the amount of poles that we have to limit the land disturbance. And so we, we would use slightly taller poles so that we would have a less number of poles that would be installed.
So that, that actually is a benefit by reducing the land disturbance, having, requesting this variance for the height of the accessory structures, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We received a comment from the engineer, I believe, earlier today concerning the FEMA 100-year flood elevation. Could you address that?
Again, the, the flood elevation, the FEMA flood elevation for the location is 176 feet. We are going to be putting our platform at a foot above that elevation, 177 feet above feet, above sea level. I will indicate that the, the existing reservoir is at 185 feet roughly, 184.5. So it's, it's extremely difficult because of the reservoirs to be there for that flooding to ever occur, but we, we are going to be one foot above that theoretical flood.
Just so the board understands, that, that height you're just, you're describing is really the berm around the reservoir, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Right, so that's what you're describing as being very difficult to get over that 186 feet of berm. Essentially.
That's right. I mean, the floodwaters would definitely rise 11 feet, well, I'm sorry, nine feet above the 100-year flood elevation to come over the wall, over the berm of the, of the reservoir. But we will still be one foot above the 100, the FEMA 100-year flood.
And can you address whether you have obtained a Essex soil certification?
So, so we have a problem for that. We may have received that. I'm sorry, I should check on that. I, I believe we've, we've cleared that hurdle.
And you have applied for an exemption from Essex County, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Madam Chair, I don't think I have any further questions for the witness.
Thank you. Are you hearing me any better? Great. Thank you. I appreciate that you went through the one question from the planner that you specifically addressed. Do you want to go through that? Would it be, could you, for our benefit, go through those items to make sure they have all been covered? Unless you're planning to ask a different witness on any of them?
No, I wasn't. I, I, I thought we, I had gone through what the planner had also asked about the height and the color of the array, and I thought we had talked about the height, and maybe not the color, but it sounds like it's really not visible.
Great. And then, yep, I see regarding the DEP coordination.
I'm, I'm happy to go through.
I think it's, I find it useful when we just kind of pass through them, so thank you for entertaining. Just in review, I see there are a total of five comments, and you're right, I do think we have addressed all of them, just sometimes it's nice to draw our attention to it, just for the sake of everybody getting on the same page, literally. And this is page six of eight of the packet we received that I'm referencing. Okay, great. Thank you for addressing the polls and the C variance. Are you speaking directly to that as outlined in number five?
Yes, we're, we're seeking the the C variance because we think that under the flexible C provisions of C2, that will create a better plan, and it'll reduce the disturbance by having slightly higher poles. And that is, by the way, your request of DEP as well.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. And now I open to the board if they have questions for this witness, who was Mr. Wirt. Does anybody have any additional questions? If you'd raise your hand. Diane, I see, yeah.
Yeah, I, I might have missed it. He might have said it. So the solar array, the panels are 18 acres, and how many acres is the entire reservoir?
It is 18 acres, and roughly the entire property is about 530 acres.
No, but this is going to be floating on the water, right?
That is correct.
How, how many acres is just the water?
I believe this particular reservoir, DEP asked us to remain less than 20%, and I know that we're, we're well under that. I think, I think we're about 160 acres just on this reservoir.
Okay. And the other notes I were, I was taking you answered as you went on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I know. Wait, I do have one more question. Um, when I was looking to put solar panels on my house, we were told we could not go 100% off the grid. So how does this work for New Jersey water to be 100% off the grid of JCP&L? Is it just different for a resident?
So it, it actually is the same, same rules. You're not allowed to produce more generation than you consume in a year. We are still, we will be connected to JCP&L's infrastructure, and it sort of gets into an instantaneous measurement basis. But, you know, because it's public water facilities, they want to maintain both the solar and the electrical infrastructure. We actually have received approval for this project from JCP&L, so they will work in tandem with each other for electrical at the site. So they will work in tandem with each other for electrical at the site.
And if they produce extra power, it goes back into the grid?
Yeah, so effectively our meter spins backwards and we receive a credit. And that night, we would use that credit up from that.
Okay, and last question, if for any reason your system went down, you're able to hook right back up to JCPNL?
It's actually synchronous, so if we go down for any reason, the power never flickers at the location.
Okay, thanks.
Mark, I see you have a question. Mark, you have to unmute.
Yeah. I, I heard you say that you wouldn't be taking down any trees or any vegetation, is that true?
That's correct, we're, we have some small impacts to vegetation right along the shore, but I would describe that as grass area. We're not within any wetlands or anything like that, but no, no, no tree removal, nothing of this sort. That, I guess I'd say is, one of the reasons that floating solar was selected for this site was to minimize all of those impacts that a traditional solar would have.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did I hear correctly that there was some mention made of a C variance?
Yes.
What is that variance that's being sought?
The height of the poles that are carrying the electric. It's 40 feet we're requesting, the permitted height is 32 feet. And the reason we're requesting the additional height is to minimize the number of poles and therefore minimize the disturbance to the land. If we go higher, we can string the wires out further. And that was the basis for it, that we're minimizing the impact, the disturbance to the land.
The reason I asked the question is that I'm looking at the notice of the hearing, and there's no mention made in the notice of the C variance.
We didn't realize it until the planner mentioned it as a possibility, and we.
This is a question then for the attorney for the board.
Well.
Can the board, can the board function, Mr. Bouzak, on a, on a C variance that was not noticed to the public?
Well, I would just like to point out that our notice did, excuse me, before Mr. Bouzak answers, I just want to point out, our notice did include the usual language that talked about the need for any additional variances and or waivers as the reviews may determine, so.
Okay, thank you, and go ahead, given that.
Yes, yeah, that was going to be the question, I didn't actually have a copy of the notice as it was published. I had a draft of it that was attached to the application. And it did have that language in that Mr. Zen refers to. It has always been my position, I think the position of the board, that if a variance is noted after the application has been filed and the notice has been published, that that omnibus language is sufficient to allow the board to consider the variance. The, the problems arise when they're known prior to the time that the application is actually heard, and there's no notice that's given specifically for that variance. Because we don't want to have, an applicant do is to ignore variances that are obvious and then rely upon the generic language in the notice. So based upon Mr. Zen's representations, I think that it's adequate, and it's, and the board does have jurisdiction to address that, that variance request. And I think it is a variance, I think a pole is a structure and is governed by the height limitations in the ordinance. I do have a couple of questions, if no one else on the board has anymore, I'd like to just ask a couple, but I'll defer to the board.
Thank you, go ahead, thank you for that response to the question at hand, and feel free to proceed with your question.
Mr. Work, if I understand this, there's two different things that we're talking about here. One is the solar array that's going to be floating on the reservoir. And the second one is a smaller, although substantially sized, equipment platform that I assume is on land, but I don't know. Can you put up that exhibit that you had A1? And can you point out where that is? You did point out where the existing temporary or pilot array was located, but I didn't notice where the platform was going to be located.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, just give me a quick second. Was exhibit A1 visible again?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this is the overall view, and of course, these are the floating structures. These are some zoom-ins, and so I will show you, these are the floating arrays again. And this very small box that's located right here is the switchgear platform for the, for the project.
Now, is that, is that, I don't have the full map before me, is that, is that located in the wetlands? Is that what the dotted area is?
So, and there's a, there's a little zoom of it up here in the, on the upper right-hand corner. It is actually located in an area that is not wetlands. There is some existing openings between the wetlands that were utility right-of-ways previously. And so we located our equipment pad in those non-wetland areas to minimize disturbance and encouragement.
And was it your testimony that that platform, to which we're referring, the equipment platform, is going to be one foot above the FEMA flood, flood elevation level? That's 177, 176 is the FEMA flood elevation, the platform would be at 177?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and the arrays, I recognize are floating on the, on the reservoir itself. What was the elevation of that? Because I know you said the berm was at 185. But I think Ms. Aglow had asked the, the elevation of the reservoir, and I don't have that clear in my notes.
Yeah, it does, it does vary significantly throughout the season. But if I would say the median water elevation in there is about 171, 172, somewhere around there.
Thank you, with regard to the variance for the poles, I understand the justification on the basis of minimizing the disturbance. But on the other hand, I, I don't know whether there's a benefit to have effectively underground utilities that would not be as susceptible to nature and, and kinds of storms and things that we've had where things are blown down and so forth. Was, was there a weighing of those factors? Either by you or by the DEP in terms of the ultimate decision to put in even higher poles, albeit a lesser number?
That's an excellent question. So it really comes from several standpoints. The first is that if we put buried infrastructure in, utility conduits, we would have had significantly more disturbance, earth disturbance on the project. Secondly, because those would be encased in protective conduits, the, there's code requirements to protect the wire that actually would have made that width wider. So what I'm saying is, is that our disturbed width from the poles is narrower and only at the poles, whereas if we had gone with underground construction, we would have had a wider swath of disturbance, and it would have been dug up the entire way. That, I mean, DEP really tries to limit us in the amount of disturbance that we make. And so the, the higher pole option was the sort of logical outcome.
What are the number of poles and the linear distance of the wires from, I assume, the platform to the facility?
I believe there are approximately 23 total poles. And that distance is roughly about 1,700 feet.
And is it a single wire, multiple wires?
There are three wires.
And are those three wires in close proximity to each other, or are they spread apart?
They're spread apart. Because of the nature of this facility, I would describe these poles as looking like traditional electric utility poles. They have a yardarm, and then those three conduct, conductors are separated by multiple feet between each of them.
And will those be visible from JFK Parkway?
They, they will likely not. Number one, we're not taller than the trees in this area, the trees are considerably taller than our poles. And there is also a number of light standards and tanks and other things from JFK. So it would be very difficult to pick these poles out from the roadway. Assuming you were stationary on the roadway, if you're moving, then it will be near impossible.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, are you hearing me okay?
Yes. Ed, one, I mean, this, whether Ed wanted to have this marked, because this is sheet three of the plan set, and this was not what was marked before as A1.
All right, we should mark it A2 then?
Okay. Yeah, so A, exhibit A2 is sheet three of the plan set.
Thank you, I thought that was still on the bottom of the plan.
No, I don't, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, and my question is also sort of regarding the plan set, so I I am afraid it might be different, I don't know. But what I'm looking at is something that's about 100, 100 feet. That includes, is this the, this platform, that this, what, what Ed was just asking to clarify about where this is located? That you pointed to this, this little tiny spot on this map?
Yeah, there are, there are several components that are, that are located there. But, but ultimately, there's, there's a single platform that, that's, let's see, we're talking 17 feet wide by about 57 feet long.
Okay. Thank you, and then, so do we have a zoom in of this, or we don't have a zoom in of that?
Actually, that upper right-hand corner is the zoom in of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm so close to the screen.
Yeah, so I, I mean, look, I actually, that's a good point, though, we're in a digital age, right? So how about this?
That's better.
Clear, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, great, so this is the, right, the equipment platform that the poles would lead from the array connect to here, and from here you do the magic with the energy.
Correct, correct, this is the first pole. So this is the equipment pad, and then this is the first pole that we interconnect to.
Okay, and then there is drive, the access via like a gravel roadway to this?
Yeah, so you can see in the contours, this is a roadway.
Okay.
So this is berm going either way, I mean, when I say it's a roadway, it's the top of the berm. They can access it by vehicle.
Okay, thank you. I will ask you to actually unshare so I can see everybody and see if anybody else has additional questions. Ed, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have one more that was prompted by the comment. What, what's the level of maintenance of these, both the floating arrays and, and the equipment platforms? Is it daily, weekly, monthly, yearly?
Yearly, yearly, unless there's, unless there's some problem. But typically, maintenance is done yearly on these systems. They have a service and maintenance very similar to ground now solar. And so we do a lot of it by drone, frankly, you know, it's less, I mean, with OSHA requirements and safety and the like, we typically don't put people on the water unless we have to.
What's the length of time of the agreement between New Jersey American Water and the applicant in terms of providing these facilities? Because typically, if I remember these correctly, there, there are agreements with termination dates.
That is correct, so this is a, the first term of the agreement is 15 years?
I'm sorry, 15?
15, yes. And then it's extendable, New Jersey American Water can purchase the asset or can choose to extend it the term longer. Expected life of the asset exceeds 30 years.
And who has the obligation to remove those facilities at, at the termination if they're no longer used under the agreement that you have?
That would be New Jersey American Water.
And can, if New Jersey American purchases these at some point under the terms of that agreement, do they then become the operator of that and the applicant is out of, out of the picture, so to speak?
Correct.
Thank you.
Question, I don't know if we're entitled to know this, but as a ratepayer, are we entitled to know what this system costs?
So what, what I can publicly offer is that the electricity that is provided by this array is very economical compared to the current grid purchase. And so New Jersey American Water has pursued this project because it will provide operational savings for their facility.
We don't know the number.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'll offer is, is it's approximately $15 million.
15?
How much? 15 million.
A lot of solar, thank you. Additional questions from our board for this? Okay, at this point, I would open it up to any of the attendees. And Eileen, just so you know, I had called in, the cell phone number is just mine, just in case I was having weird audio that I could, wouldn't lose anything. But if either of the other members in the public have any questions for this witness, now's a good time.
It was Tara, it was Tara video-wise, so I don't know if that is kind of, I don't know where she went.
Okay.
So there she is.
She's here, okay.
So I don't want, I don't know if I, voting-wise, I need to know who's here, who can vote.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, and not seeing any questions from our attendees. Comments from attendees, any testimony from members of the public? Okay, great, not hearing any. Coming back to Ed, I just have a specific question regarding the bulk variance. Do we take a vote on that prior to voting on the whole application, or is it a bundle?
No, it's typically a bundle, we did it separately on the prior, on the memorialized resolution we talked about tonight because of the specific issues that were addressed. But, but before we go any further, there were two waivers, I believe, that were requested. One was the environmental impact statement. And another, I think, dealt with the plans.
That was actually a checklist waiver, Ed, the, the size of the plans, that's, and am I correct, Martha? That was a checklist waiver for not submitting, submitting plans that were not the scale that we typically ask for. I'm not sure it was a, it was more a checklist.
It was on the checklist, wait.
They noted it as a waiver. But I know that we typically vote on them as waivers in the meeting, I'll leave that up to you.
I thought that we typically do have the board vote on, it's really a completeness issue, and we probably should have done that at the beginning. But to keep the record straight, we probably should do that. And there was an EIS waiver requested, as I recall. Which we do typically vote on, so maybe we can, we can just take care of that housekeeping first. The checklist waiver on the scale issue and the EIS waiver for the application itself.
Another question. Since this is a minor site plan, why is it necessary to request a waiver for an EIS when EIS isn't necessary?
Necessary.
As part of a minor site plan.
Correct.
And we don't need a waiver.
Here we go.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
No problem.
So now it's only potentially a waiver request for the completeness from the checklist?
That's correct. That's correct. Minor, a minor item.
A minor item, indeed. Okay. And are we doing this by a roll vote or a voice vote, Eileen?
Uh.
We would need a motion for.
Correct.
I will make a motion to continue hearing this application, as it were, given this minor checklist waiver request.
Second.
I, I think Eileen usually does roll calls on these. I'm not sure.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Gassen Halper?
Yes.
Jorge Mascher Petro?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Sarah Prupus?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Other items, Ed, that we should make sure we cross Ts and dot Is?
I think that's it. It, it would be, uh, if, if the board is favorably inclined, it would be a motion, uh, to, uh, grant minor, uh, site plan approval for, uh, to the applicant, uh, and the variance to allow, uh, for the, uh, 40-foot-high utility poles as opposed to the 32 feet that is required, uh, under the ordinance, and it would be 20, 23 poles if I have my notes correctly, uh, noted here. And the conditions, I'm sorry, the conditions would be the typical conditions that we have. I didn't note any special condition, uh, that the board had, had, uh, referred to, so I don't have anything beyond the, the typical conditions that we have.
Does anybody want to make such a motion?
Um, I will make that motion as Ed stated it.
I stake on that.
Thank you, Jorge.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Gassen Halper?
Yes.
Jorge Mascher Petro?
Yes.
Mark Mattel?
Yes.
Sarah Prupus?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Thank you.
So thank you for, and your, um, for your participation tonight. Um, thank you. And before I continue, I believe we have no additional items on our agenda for the evening.
No.
And thus, uh, our next meeting is, oh, not written on our agenda, I'm sorry.
September 2nd.
The 2nd of September. We're back to, okay, two per month, um, September.
I moved it with Karen.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Gassen with the second.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Have a good evening. 8:27, meeting adjourned. Enjoy your night.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
All right.
Night.